Oh, did we know we were missing her?
Uh, she wasn't coming on until five-ish.
Five, yep.
Possibly, yeah.
So before we get started tonight, um, I see we don't have as many participants as we have on some meeting. Um, tonight will be the last meeting for Gary Gallagher. And, uh, I think I speak for the entire council when I say, um, Gary, that you will be sorely missed. Your guidance to all of us, your, um, intelligence, your, uh, ability to change your mind on things when, um, information comes your way, your financial knowledge has really helped this town and this council. Um, I think more than we could ever say. And it is, it is a shame that you're leaving us right now and we all understand why, but, um, I for one will miss you terribly and your leadership. So, thank you. Um, we are going to have something in a couple of weeks or months that we'd love you to come back up for if you can. Um, and hopefully we can socially distance and, you know, tell you how we feel about you face to face. And if you don't want Jeffrey to talk, I can totally arrange that, so.
Well, thank you, thank you, Eric. I think, you know, it wasn't, it was not an easy decision. Um, I would have very much liked to have filled out, filled out my term, which was a commitment I had made, uh, two years ago. But unfortunately, sometimes things change. A family situation, I know Jean is very bummed out that, uh, she feels that she's the cause of me not being able to fulfill my commitment. Uh, so she doesn't feel particularly, uh, you know, good, good about this, but it's just something that, um, you know, the time had come and was the right thing to do. You know, I look back and I say fortunately, uh, Jean and I had seventeen great years in Breckenridge. Would we like to have had more? Absolutely. But, uh, we'll take the seventeen, you know, terrific years that we've had and seventeen years that, uh, that most people don't get. Uh, and so I consider ourselves fortunate for having gotten it. I feel even fortunate having the ability to have served on council for a little over six years. Um, representing a community that is just so supportive of town council. Um, it allows town council to really do its job, that we don't have to look over our shoulders, uh, to see, you know, what's coming next. Uh, the community's been very supportive and I think, uh, you know, council has been able to move forward, deal with the issues, uh, debate them, discuss them, make decisions and move on. And I think that a lot of that is because of the, the community's support. Um, you know, the staff is second to none from the top down. Uh, you know, Rick and Shannon, the senior leadership team and all the employees that I've ever come across. Um, I'll just say second to none and second to none in their professionalism, their courtesy and their, and their skill sets. And, um, you know, lastly, I always like to do a shout out for, uh, for Tim Berry. Um, so professional, so calm, has guided town councils, uh, through some very difficult issues, very wisely over the years, um, and quite frankly, keeping all of us out of trouble. And he does it very quietly, sort of sub rosa. And I just would like to, uh, you know, give a shout out to Tim in terms of everything that he's done for this town over so many, many years. And, um, you know, with that, I will allow the, the council sessions to begin. Thank you.
You're the man. All right. Let's go to, uh, planning commission decisions. Anybody have anything for, uh, July twenty-second? Hearing crickets. Uh, there is no legislative review tonight. How about that for a final meeting for Gary? That is pretty cool.
Outstanding.
Here's your report and starting with public projects update. Shannon Smith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I do want to jump to Ski Hill Road repair first, if that's possible. And then Shannon Hanes can help with any Wi-Fi questions. We are able to push the schedule on that repair to August tenth start, if that's more favorable.
Yes.
Hoping we can finish before the holiday weekend in September, but it might spill over to the week after. But we wouldn't work on that Friday before Labor Day.
Great. How's everybody feel about, uh, moving that schedule back just a bit? Yeah, Ashley had asked Rick to see if we can move it back a week, just to get a little bit closer to that middle of August, um, sort of end of our real busy period. So, I appreciate it.
And ComDev was happy to work with us on that and really have a hard look at that and pushed it a week for us. So, we'll proceed with that if council is supportive of that expenditure up to seventy thousand dollars. We do already have that marked in the capital funds. We don't need to appropriate any funds for it.
I just want to say I appreciate you reaching out to the contractor and getting the cost sharing, uh, piece of that. I appreciate that a lot.
All right.
Need a question?
I mean, we're not happy that we got to get out there and do some stuff, but it's one of those things that happen. And, you know, I think we share a little responsibility with ComDev and kind of approving that original design. So, we're shouldering some of the responsibility and they're stepping up and helping cover some of the costs. So, we just need to get it done, get it fixed right, so.
Who did the design, Rick? Do they have any culpability in this?
Uh, might have been us in-house.
Oh, never mind.
We did have a, an engineering firm, C T L Thompson is a local firm, do it. We followed a C dot detail, but it didn't seem to work well for our application. We are modifying and changing the rail design a bit, so we think there's a lot of added value to the redesign and the rework. But ComDev is taking credit for some of the deficiencies in the concrete. So, I think it's, it's fair the way it's hashing out.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, anything on, uh, fiber ninety-six hundred or public Wi-Fi? So I had asked Shannon, um, about seeing if there was a way that we could sort of push this ball forward a little faster, potentially without, you know, maybe going to one of these bigger companies, maybe doing something where we could, I don't know, start in a smaller area. You know, we own enough buildings in town. We should be able to get somewhere. Um, I, I'd hate to keep pushing this thing down the road until we have a contractor that can do the whole, the whole, you know, core of town as opposed to Town Hall, Riverwalk, um, visitor center, potentially county building. Yeah. How's everybody feel about Jeffrey?
Yeah, why, why not? I mean, it's, it's a bit of a cost, but not, I don't think it's astronomical. Yeah, I, I'm all for it. Yeah, let's, let's get this thing done.
Uh, so just the part that, um, what we had originally talked about was a really robust Wi-Fi exterior to our buildings. We already have Wi-Fi in our buildings, so exterior to the buildings in the core of town. And, um, Chris did work with someone early on to do a quick heat map to see where our, uh, gaps were. Um, so certainly if council wants us to move forward, and there's Chris, he can talk more intelligently about this. We could move forward with, um, what we can do with our own and we'll have some gaps in that coverage. What we were trying to do is look to see if that small cell vendor, the A T C Newcom, would be able to include that robust Wi-Fi in their project. But it's just time-wise, it's not going to make sense for us. Piece of it's going to take. Um, so Chris can speak to how much he thinks we could get done this year and then what we would need to do after that.
Thank you.
Right, I think that it'd be easier if we come back with a map of the town locations that we already kind of went through the process of engineering around town buildings and present that to you guys and see if you find that acceptable. And then we can move forward from there. You think that's a good jump off point?
I think in agreement, I, I would encourage us to, uh, maybe talk to the school district as well, because I know they're, they're putting buses out in strategic locations to create hotspots for, for, um, those students that don't have access to Wi-Fi. And, uh, so maybe if nothing else, we can let, let the school district know where we're going to have coverage, so that if there are any students that want to go to public places and try to take advantage of it, it might be helpful.
But I'm generally. It's a health, health issue too. I think, you know, people don't want to go to coffee shops sometimes and, and, and so outside, I think it's a, makes total sense. And I, I don't, yeah, I guess I'd want to see the price, but I think it's worth it for sure.
And Dick, just so you know, Dick, we have had, we're having conversations with the school about exactly what we can do to assist. And, uh, we've had a couple of those conversations already, so.
Great, Rick. I appreciate that.
We'll come back with a plan and what this could look like to do. Um, we're also going to be doing a little more fiber work than was originally planned in our scope of work for twenty twenty, because we do have some, uh, we were able to experience a little bit of savings in the money we had budgeted this year from some efficiencies and the work we did. So, we're just going to continue to do a little more work outside of that scope. And some of that, we, uh, Chris really wants to see us get the fiber run to our, uh, what do we call it? Our data center at, up on Campion, um, where, which houses the, the meat of all of our, the town operations in there. And so we want to get it run up there and then we want to start taking it to the north. Um, from the, uh, you know, there at the Justice Center where our meet me center is, we want to start running the line to the north. We think eventually we need to be, uh, you know, we'd like to see fiber, uh, available for those housing projects we're doing to the north. And, uh, you know, and so we, we think that's a critical point to start heading that direction anyway. So, well, and we can't go real far with the money we have, but at least we can start to do some of that work. And, uh, we may end up coming back to you with a small proposal, because, I mean, there's a couple of different directions we can go with fiber and using some of the things this year. But one or two of those could put us like fifty grand over what we have budgeted or something like that. So, we can, we have about eight, over eight hundred thousand in savings, so we can get some considerable work done this year. But it could, it could put us slightly over, so we'll, we'll keep you up to speed on where that's at.
Any other questions on fiber or the Wi-Fi? All right, how about, uh, River Park Phase Two or the water treatment plant? Plant looks awesome.
Like the landscaping.
Yeah, thanks for taking that on, Jeffrey. I appreciate you.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, I forgot to, I don't have James, uh, Shannon, is there a decision that we got to make soon on the, there was some discussion on putting the word Breckenridge back on Baker's Tank, kind of to match the historic way that used to occur on water tanks. Um, that was part of the original plan and then it was pulled off for some reason. I don't know if, uh, if it violated our code or, and honestly, uh, James had said we want, we needed to talk about it. But I'm not sure if, if we're ready to ask councils, or maybe I shouldn't have said anything right yet.
Too late.
We can handle that the day that I'm mayor.
Yeah, we might. That might be something good to see.
I'm not familiar with it, but if it is a decision point for council, we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
I'm sure how, how sensitive it is. All right.
Okay.
Waiting for James to text me, but he hasn't yet, so.
I'm dead, but it's okay with it.
Yeah.
That's what Julia said.
Just so you all know, we are trying to target a ribbon cutting in that, around that first week of September. And we think that we can do it, uh, safely. And, uh, with, you know, by having the council there to be a part of it in a way that we could create physical distancing and wear your mask, et cetera. And, uh, but we'll obviously won't, and we hope to do a, a quick tour of it again, but we'll have to really limit, uh, who's there and as part of that. So, we'll keep it to a very minimum number of people. But that is something that I would like to bring both Gary and Wendy back for, because they've been, they were both a big part of, uh, all of this stuff happening over the years, so. And James, you're on there. Is there, was I premature in bringing that up about the lettering?
Now, that, um, since, uh, since I mentioned that to, uh, both you and Shannon the other day, I have discussed this with ComDev and there doesn't seem to be any kind of, uh, code issue for doing that. So, um, the rendering that I shared with the two of you the other day for how Breckenridge will be labeled on the tank will be what we'll, we'll instruct the, uh, contractor to, to, uh, put on the tank.
All right. So, yeah, we're going to have the word Brecker is your class to think. I think it'll look nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's where we live.
Awesome. Thanks, James. Hang around. Any, any questions on, uh, parking structure? Everybody get a look at those great pictures and the humongous hole that we had to dig?
Yeah.
Bigger than we thought it would be.
Yeah, we, I mean, there's some, uh, oh, good, we got Aaron. So, uh, we're just in public project right now. There, you know, there's some, uh, what do you call it? Just some bad material in the soil, which caused us to have to go down a little deeper than we thought we were going to do. And probably put it, are we behind schedule maybe a day or two because of some of that extra digging?
Uh, we're on schedule, but there was, as you mentioned, a lot of unsuitable soil. We knew there was some from the initial geotech report, but we've run into a lot more. But luckily, we've had some savings on the excavation as well, so right now we're not over budget or, I guess, so we're doing really well on it.
Good.
All right. Anyone? Questions? Comments? Everybody good?
Good.
All right. Let's then move on to Housing and Childcare Committee notes. Hi Lori, how are you?
Great, how are you doing?
Welcome. Why don't you give us the, uh, Tencent tour?
Sure, sure. Um, our, our minutes from the last meetings were, are in your packet. Um, and if there are any questions in regard to those minutes, I'm happy to answer them or go through any of those topics. Um, the only thing that I would have to add is that we did get good news today. I think you all know from the county in terms of their housing helps budget. Um, so that was great news. Thank you, Dick, for reaching out and, um, starting down the conversation to consider that, because that'll enable us to get deed restrictions on quite a few more units in the upper blue. Um, but other than that, um, I guess I can respond to any questions that you might have about the, um, either the childcare, um, committee minutes or the, the housing committee minutes.
Lori, just one question, one thought that I had. I know, I know there's a lot going on now with the coronavirus. A lot of focus in, you know, in some very important directions. But, you know, some time ago, you know, we also, you know, decided that we really do need an independent revenue stream for, for childcare. And I, I guess I, as I'm leaving, I just want to throw out that I, I hope we're not kind of keep setting that aside, because I do think it's going to require some significant and very thoughtful lead time in order to really be able to put together an appropriate campaign, education, get people to really support that, a ballot initiative when it comes. And so, um, when these groups are meeting, is this, is this coming up as an issue or is it just too far away?
It, it's still, um, you know, in, in the back of our minds and, and we have identified, um, you know, roughly the timing and recognize that we need to start doing work right away to start preparing for that. So, you know, appreciate the, um, just the reminder and we'll make sure that we include that on our future agendas every time we meet to have a chat about where we're at and what our next steps need to be to be prepared for that.
Good. Thank you.
And Gary, I, I mean, that's on my radar screen and I've been having conversations recently and it's something that I'd like to target for, uh, the April twenty, April of twenty-two, uh, election. But I think, uh, we need to get, uh, a little calmer times before we start having too much public discussion on that, which I hope will be sooner than later in, next year in twenty-one, so.
Well, it, yeah, maybe, um, I actually really appreciate Gary, you bringing this up, because I feel like we have gotten really sucked into the day-to-day. And I don't see that changing for the directors especially, and that's a pretty good portion of our group is like, um, and so maybe Lori, what we could think about is if we could sort of, um, do a little, you know, committee within our committee that could just start really looking at the day-to-day or, you know, what we should be doing in the immediate future. Because I think it'll be a huge mistake if we don't work on this before twenty twenty-one. So, um, thanks Gary for bringing that up.
What was that? You guys hear something?
Just a small explosion. No, don't worry about it.
I'm in agree, I'm in agreement with you guys' comments. I had a, a unrelated question. How, how diverse are the applications we're getting for childcare assistance? I mean, I, I guess we don't know from applications, but maybe I'll reword that. We're making efforts to, uh, to, to reach, reach out to all, yeah, community members and, you know, regardless of, of, uh, their ability to read or, or speak English or, or any other, um, things that may differentiate, you know, their ability to, to, to know that childcare assistance exists out there and, and that, um, we, we really want to be, be inclusive of all.
Yeah, you know, the, the enrollment period for this particular cycle actually ended, I think it was last week or the week before. Um, but, um, and, and I know that Cory, um, and the centers reach out a lot to their families. Um, you know, I, I think almost anybody that's in a facility now is aware of the program. But, you know, whether, um, there's a population out there that, um, hasn't been reached, I, I don't know. We put ads in the paper, um, and we try to be as inclusive as possible. Um, but, um, you know, if somebody would come to us and say, hey, I didn't know it existed and, you know, now I found out about it. I'm, I'm sure we'd be willing to consider them out of cycle. Um, so, you know, I can talk to Cory and when she gets back and make sure she feels like we've done the outreach that we can, um, to reach those families.
The ads are.
And Dick, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, we talked about, you know, Spanish applications and, um, we definitely, um, FERC really reaches out for us. And so there is, um, you know, I think the right people are getting the word out. Of course, we could always do better and look for more ways. And I'm definitely hoping that as we move forward with the equity committee, that we would, um, you know, be able to have that whole process maybe looked at, see if there's any way that we could get it more inclusive or reach out better or do that. But, and we have been talking about that at the meetings for sure.
Right here and yeah, let's continue keeping it in front of, front of mind.
Yeah, absolutely. It's good. Good call, Dick. Anything else on the housing? Uh, Lori, when's the decision going to be made on the bonus room, um, bonus rooms and the, uh, the other incentive piece?
Um, we talked to the, um, committee about two different things. One was sort of the bonus room incentive and the other was sort of a maintenance and upkeep, um, strategy. Um, the decision ultimately will be up to the council. You know, we need to prepare a proposal for your consideration. I think we wanted to go to the committee just to, to bounce some ideas off the committee. Uh, we definitely need to go back to the committee for more vetting of the maintenance. Um, but in return, in regard to the bonus, I think we're maybe ready to put together a proposal for the council to consider. Um, you know, there's pros and cons and I think the council, um, you know, needs to evaluate that and see if it's, um, worth pursuing. Um, and we're, we're hoping, um, I don't know when we'll get back to council on that, that A D U bonus room, um, um, proposal, but probably within, um, a month or so, maybe, maybe six weeks. Um, I know that, um, Nicole wanted to get the maintenance, um, concept in front of council, uh, your last meeting in August, I believe. So, maybe we do it all that meeting.
Kelly?
Yeah, I forgot I had a question about this. So, you, you guys use sort of A D U and bonus room in that memo? And I couldn't tell if you really meant bonus room, because like a lot of places in Wellington just have a room that has no restroom, no kitchenette or anything in it. And so I was curious of, um, when you were, I mean, that, to me, that wouldn't function as an A D U. And so I'm not really sure why we would, um, accept or instead, advise that at all, just having a room, a bonus room above the garage.
Yeah, it, um, according to the Wellington master plan, only market units are allowed to have A D Us. So, we're not really talking about A D Us, but what we are talking about is bonus rooms that are set up for rental, um, as a second unit. So, it can't have two twenty in it, but it can have some, a kitchen facilities and.
So, you would be specific that it would have to have a restroom? Because, I mean, yeah, I feel like if people are just building a bonus room up there, they're using it as an office or something that's self-serving, that's not really helping with, okay.
Yeah. What we're talking about is additional units that can be rented to a, somebody that's a, a separate household.
We're going to definitely need some verbiage on that and it can't be, we have to make sure that it's not just a place for your, you know, your college-age daughter to come up and ski on the weekend or anything like that. Lori, I'd also like to know when you're putting this together, um, you know, are we going to offer this to people that have already built them? Um, what is that impact? How many are we talking about? And then what's the overall impact in the neighborhood to how many this could potentially be? Um, you know, what, what is this going to do for an increase in the amount of rooms that are getting built and the parking problems that come with them? So, I, I think there's a, sort of a large, there's a large discussion to be had about the pros and cons of this.
Yeah, there's always the concern about the, the cars that are associated with the additional rental units. Um, and where are they going to park and what's the impact on the neighborhood? And so, you know, our initial concept is that, you know, if you want to recoup some of your investment in a bonus room that you rent, um, you have to provide one parking spot on site. So, that's going to sort of negate a lot of people who really just can't accommodate the additional parking demand. Um, but anyway, yeah, we, we agree. There's a lot of pros, there's a lot of cons and it's going to take, um, a full vetting and, and we're putting together that, that list and we'll try to present it to you guys and so you can make a decision that, um, you understand the pros and the cons.
Excellent.
Lori, just one more thing. Um, when, when you put this together, if you could do a, um, a budget or a balance sheet of what it all looks like, it's, it's hard for me to read this and see like, okay, well, what is, yeah, what is the, how much does it take out of the mortgage payment? What does that look like? If we could look at a profile of a family that would be interested in doing this, that would be great.
Oh.
Amazing.
One more.
Go ahead.
Well, I would like to discuss, um, capping how much you can rent these places for. Because I'll tell you, in the Wellington neighborhood right now, people are getting more than their mortgage for these places. And that's just, in my opinion, wrong.
Yeah.
So, I think we should have a tough discussion about, you know, putting some sort of cap on the rentals of these A D Us. If we're allowing this to come into the deed restriction, then I think it should be all, all in there.
Yeah, only if you can, if you're getting money, if you're getting the potential to get money back from this thing, I agree with you, Kelly. The people that decide, I'd rather not have a cap on my rental and just. The people that decide, I'd rather not have a cap on my rental and just, you know, make, make more money. That, that may financially work better for them than, um, the ability to increase the price on sale.
Yeah, you get one or the other. You can't have both.
The other. Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, even a cap to rental rate will, will help families, um, the owner significantly. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
We'll put together some numbers and, um, and, uh, get you guys, uh, something to, to look at.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions for Lori while we, we have her in front of us?
No.
A great job. Great job. Housing helps Lori. That is amazing. Amazing how that program is taking off.
It's super cool. We're now getting some momentum, which is really nice. And, you know, it's a lot of current owners and it's just helping current owners be able to, you know, pay their mortgage and, and do things and maintain their units. So it's super, super, um, um, I think effective program. We're going to do some outreach to more in-town condos because, you know, we're getting not, you know, almost all the units that we've been dealing with are in the unincorporated areas. So we're going to really reach out to some of the, the complexes where we know we have locals living and, and, you know, and try to incentivize some of the condos to come online too.
Awesome. Great job.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, committee reports. There were none. Anybody have any questions about, uh? Uh, we had a T-PAC and that looks like about it. So, uh, anybody have any questions on transit and parking advisory committee? Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about transit in a little while also, so we can wait. Um, financials. Hi, Brian.
Hello, Eric. Good afternoon. I was just going to start briefly by actually opened a letter that was for you this afternoon, Eric, and it's actually from the CARES Coronavirus Relief Fund approving our application for the $440,000 reimbursement, which will go to offset the 1.5 million that we spent for the business and the, uh, citizen or residential relief, rental relief programs that we did back in April. So.
Right.
That was really good news. I don't think you'd mind me opening that.
No, thank you.
No. Well, case if there's white powder or anything in there, you want to make sure we have a, a tester, taster.
That's right. Um, and then getting to the financials, you know, the, the relatively good news that you see in the report is that we're, we're doing better than what we estimated back in March. Uh, the May numbers were down 44% and Heather was actually able to compile June for us, down only 25.2%. So, you know, saying only 25% is a little weird, but it's better than, uh, between 50 and 60% estimates that we've been working with. So those are small dollar months. So that, that news is tempered a little bit. Obviously, you know, July, August, and then December are really going to be what determines where we land. But that's better news than, than we were anticipating. Um, and also RET is, as of right now, at $380,000 for July. And the budget is only $433,000. So RET seems to be making a recovery. It's almost kind of, well, it's almost like when the offices were all closed, you know, that they're getting caught up now. So we'll see where that shakes out going forward, but really hope we're hoping to have some upward adjustments to our annual estimates. Um, obviously we'll still have some, some tough work to do going into 21, but it, it might turn out to be a little better than we were initially projecting.
I think July will end up being better than we thought, Brian. And in general, from what I've been hearing from some of the realtors in town, it sounds like they're busy. So.
Yep. We, we hear from the title companies that they're anticipating being busy. They have a lot of stuff in their schedules and they, it does seem like they're getting caught up from when we were more or less closed. Nobody could really come here during those, uh, those initial months. So cautiously optimistic that we'll be doing a little better than, than we projected. Obviously still some substantial hits to revenue, but, um, we're, we're keeping an eye on that as we go forward. There were no real major variances in the expense section of the report. So, um, after, if there's any questions about either the, you know, how we're looking at the revenues or any of the expenses. Gary, I'm hoping for a very difficult question from you. Maybe one last one. Nothing? Okay. I know Jeffrey will continue your, your tradition after you're gone.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the delta, but not in this meeting. I'll wait till our mayor.
We can do that. Okay.
Okay.
The, the interesting thing about, um, about where May and then potentially June's going to end up is that different sectors drove the market than normal. You know, wasn't retail was down, restaurant was down, other parts of the, of the overall market are what really kept us afloat. So we're going to hopefully be able to hang our hat a little bit on construction and, um, you know, obviously RET, that retail out of town number is pretty exceptional considering. So that's, hopefully retail and restaurant will be a little bit better for July. I've heard a number of good comments from some of the local, local retailers and restaurateurs. So hopefully, uh, hopefully we won't be too bad going into the fall.
What I worry, what I worry about is, is all this is weather related. I mean, you know, the, the real estate is shown better when it's warm or shown more often. The whatever, the, the retail with, uh, walk on Main Street is a little bit of a bump. I, I just, you know, if it gets nasty, you know, when it gets, when it gets nasty, uh, in November and into the, you know, the final months of, uh, 2020, I mean, that could be, that could be a wake up call if we don't have, um, if we don't have some sort of end to this in sight.
And, and we won't. We can't, we gotta, we, we as a group have to understand that thi- this is the good part of the year for us right now. This is a good part of the COVID year. You know, we got, uh, we got a lot of activity going on outside right now. We have a lot of activity in retail and restaurant, not only in walkable main, but the other parts of, of the core. I think things are working well because the weather is good.
Yeah.
Soon as we start pulling everything inside, and that includes decks on, you know, decks that are not on walkable main, that, that's when we will get to that point where nobody has more than 50 people in their place. We're going to see a huge decrease in these numbers. That's why we got to really think about what, what other strategies can we help some of these businesses employ, um, when it does start to snow? You know, when everything's back to, you know, normal. So.
Eric's, Eric's absolutely right. I, I mean, it's, the, the winters, winters can be hard. We need to all brace and, and really put our thinking caps on for creative ideas. I don't know if we call them solutions, but ideas to move the needle a little, um, you know, around takeout, delivery, um, of both retail and restaurants. Because both are going to really be limited in their capacities to do commerce really on site. You know, it's, uh, um, so, you know, it's, it's good. I, I know the conversations are, are happening. The brainstorming sessions are happening and Lucy's talking about it, seems like in multiple meetings all the time. She's encouraging, you know, community leaders to really think creatively for solutions. So I really echo what Eric's saying. It's, I think this is not going to be an easy winter and, um, and we just need to keep our eye on the, you know, target and see, see whatever creative ideas we have to, to make it a little better, a little easier. Is someone, uh, staff working, uh, kind of looking into the viability of, of COVID decks with heaters and stuff like that for some of the restaurants and retails if they have them?
Go ahead, Rick.
Uh, we're going to give you an update under the next topic when we're talking COVID, on what the immediate plans are with how we're doing some focus groups and, and, you know, what we've already learned on outdoor tanning and, uh, because these things are starting this week. So once we wrap up with any other questions for, uh, Brian relative to financials, we'll just move on to that section.
That's what we call a good segue, Jeffrey. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else on financials while we're here? Okay. COVID update. Rick?
Uh, I'll let Shannon's going to brief and talk to you about, uh, any additional business relief we want to do. We did reach out and, and try to get an idea of who out there would be looking for some additional help. Before I should get into that, um, as part of our, uh, um, committee that meets weekly, you know, we, we surveyed, uh, the business community and, uh, Shannon, do you know how many surveys were returned?
I don't. We have just Ron's stuff back, but it just came through today. So we haven't had a chance to look at it.
So there's, you know, one of the things we were asked in that survey was people's opinion relative to, to when we should open, uh, Main Street backup for traffic. And, uh, and then in addition to that, we wanted to start to, uh, to gather from them their thoughts about the fall and the winter and what they might be thinking or, or creative ideas they might have, et cetera, or what they think they might need from the town, what they might want or need from BTO. Uh, so we had a, a number of those back. And, and one of the reasons we want to have a special meeting with, uh, on August 4th, a week from today, is to actually discuss those topics with you. Um, so that, you know, one of the things we committed to Eric about is not trying to have these, uh, super long meetings like last time when we were, those people that were on the housing committee started at one o'clock and so they were on, you know, Zoom calls for seven hours. And we want to break some of this stuff up and try to do, well, if we need an hour, hour and a half to have a good COVID-related discussion on planning, et cetera, let's do that as part of a special meeting. So, uh, I'm not going to get into the survey results with you right now because we do want to, we do want to really, uh, uh, break that survey information down so that we understand how people responded relative to their location. If they're inside the closure area versus outside the closure area. Overwhelmingly, we have, we have got positive support for this continuing longer. I, I do know that right off the top of my head. But, you know, one of the things that typically when you do a written survey, then you kind of want to drill down on that further. So you, you put together some focus groups, right? And let's bring in identified number of people from each, uh, maybe business segment and kind of expand on what, uh, what we saw in the, uh, in, in the written instrument. And so we've put together five different, five focus groups. There'll be one for lodging, two for restaurants, uh, two different times. One for, uh, retail and then, uh, the fourth group is kind of the other, which is, you know, possibly other service provider type industries out there that wouldn't be captured in the other three. So we've got those schedules starting this week, Thursday. Is that our first one? Thursday morning with the retail group. And then I think we have a couple, uh, Friday. The two, uh, one restaurant and one because we're swapping restaurant with lodging, right? So we're doing a restaurant and a lodging on Friday. And then next week we'll wrap up the, the other two. We're relying on each of those associations to help us identify, uh, a dozen or so participants that would, would, uh, work, you know, be a part of each of those focus groups and gather information. So if, if we are, if we can get a, uh, special meeting scheduled for the fourth, we'll have done a number of those and we could start to give you some feedback. But really we're trying, we don't want to be scrambling at the last minute, right? What are the creative ideas? As Dick was saying, what's the brainstorming that's going on? How might we capitalize on some of the things? Winter is a different animal than summer. What worked in the summer is not necessarily going to work in the winter for us here. So, uh, we've got to look at it through some different lens and see where we go. So that's the plan with that. Any questions on that part?
Who's attending from the town?
Uh, well, Shannon and I will be running the focus group along with, uh, BTO. It'll be at least, uh, I think Tess, probably Tessa and Lucy and Shannon and I will be, uh, leading the focus group. So we're going to be talking tomorrow to kind of lay out the, uh, the role. It, it's a little different, right? Trying to do a virtual focus group and, you know, um, the whole, uh, you know, dot voting and some of those things you do, we got to get a little creative to see how that's going to work. But, uh, we're going to give it a shot. We think we'll be all right.
Great. I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Anything else?
Shannon wants to talk a little bit about some, uh, what you want to do with any additional business relief.
So, um, there's a memo in the packet, um, at council's request. We did a survey, um, trying to capture businesses that have been closed because of public health order. So mostly bars, um, one arcade business that's had to be closed because of public health order. We had, um, now eight responses. It was six when we wrote the memo. Um, but really of those, there's probably four that are truly closed. No business can't, you know, can't or have not opened up because of the public health requirements. So, um, the information we got back, I think one of the kind of key pieces to that is what folks are paying and looking for, um, for help. We wanted to know, you know, what kind of business they had and then what kind of relief they might be most interested in. And, um, you know, they were looking for mortgage or rent relief and the amounts they needed varied on the low end from about $1,200 to the very high end of $11,000 for one, one business. So with that in mind, we kind of have this wide range of need. We would propose, if councils agreeable, to offering up a program that would be available to businesses that are closed because of public health order and that have a physical location. So they, you know, have this need for rental or mortgage assistance. They have a physical premise. Um, and then, you know, like I said, we have this kind of wide range of need. And so based on what we've done before, we're recommending a $4,000 maximum per month with a maximum relief of two months. Um, so that's what we've proposed and we're happy to answer any questions or take whatever direction you have for us.
Out of curiosity, what are the industries?
Uh, bars and one arcade.
Hey Shannon, of these businesses that are applying, how many of them have an opportunity to stay in business through the fall? Do we have any idea on that? I mean, are these businesses going to go out of business anyhow?
Um, we didn't ask that question, so I don't know if, how close any of them are to potentially going.
Pretty important question though, isn't it?
Yeah, but it could be awful hard to get a good answer to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. How can you tell if, I mean, it depends on if the public order changes, right? Probably.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
And I would say we probably have some businesses that are operating minimally right now. They're not closed by public health order that are probably in that boat of not knowing whether or not.
Okay. Gary?
Yeah, I was just curious, Shannon. Um, you know, our first phase on this rental assistance program that we did for, for, for a lot of businesses, we went through two phases. And that was to help them really for like maybe up to about two months, you know, as long with their landlord helping and, and we helping, blah, blah, blah. Are we seeing, are we, are we hearing any noise that many of the, within that group was, was kind of circling back and saying, you know, that was great for the two months. You, you bought me two months, but, um, starting to struggle again and therefore is the town considering anything further? I'm just wondering, as we do some of these programs incrementally, I think it's important to be thinking about, you know.
I think that we're probably going to see that on our survey responses and probably within those focus groups that one of the things we'll hear from folks is that the town needs to help or ask of the town to help.
And I, Gary, I think we're definitely going to see this in the fall.
I do too.
As we transition, you know, things are, I would say in general for most of the businesses, I think people are okay at the moment. Um, you know, when we have our restaurant calls on Monday and then retailers that, you know, Dick and I both talked to as we walked down the street, I think most people are solvent at the moment, but this will turn ugly, even if there is no change in our position, relative to the public health order, even if things continue as is. This, this could get, you know, pretty dark, um, if December, January, February, nobody can allow more people in their businesses. We still don't know what the SCIRI is going to be doing. So I, you know, the council. We still don't know what the SCIRI is going to be doing. So I, you know, the council needs to think about, you know, how much money would, would we make available for a second round of sort of stimulus for rent relief at the end of this year?
That, that's exactly where I'm going is to really be thinking about. You know, it's easy to kind of get pulled in on incremental, right? Somebody needs some help today. And so we, now we develop a new program. But it's really all about being able to look down the road. And not only going into winter, but if we have a relapse on this coronavirus, you know, which a lot of, you know, the, the medical experts are saying we could get, you know, get spanked again heavily this fall. That really will have nothing to do with the winter. Winter will, will be something in and of itself. And we've got a whole different situation where we're starting to go back to stay at homes and lockdowns and things of that nature. So.
And unfortunately, some of that might have zero to do with what we've been doing. You know, I think we've, we've been trying to do the right thing, but we're not always surrounded by everybody doing the right thing. As you know, many of the counties that got a variance from the governor have gotten their variance removed lately because of spikes in those counties, because they were allowed to open up more than we were. You know, I think staying the course like the county has done for us, I, I think Public Works is real, oh, Public Works, Public Health has done an excellent job of bringing us to today. And, you know, very measured. I, I think it's, it's good that we haven't had to retreat. We're on the right path. But you're right, Gary. They, if, if Polis decides to shut the state down in, you know, November because Denver's out of hand and Colorado Springs and Fort Collins are out of hand or something like that, there's nothing we can do about that. So we need to be at least mentally prepared right now.
Yeah, because you could, you could get an entirely new administration come November who thinks entirely differently about how do we really put a cap on the coronavirus spread? The way they've done it in Europe and it was really.
Successful.
It came down hard for a period of time in order to get it under control. And so if that were to happen, it's going to be, you're going to have a national program that goes out and telling states to basically rein it in.
And I don't want to lose sight of what's going on with people who have kids at home who may not be able to work because of school situations and, or, you know, to get back into school after you have sniffles, might take 10 days. I mean, there are going to be a lot of parents who aren't able to work as much as they normally would have, even if they have a job. And then, you know, on the flip side are, are facilities, which if they have to shut down, you know, for an extended amount of time, I mean, right now their intent is to charge everyone. But if we, if they have to be closed for months at a time, then they're going to need some financial help as well. So there are a lot of people who in the fall and winter season are going to be with their hands out.
And you know what? Maybe what we should start thinking about is, you know, we've budgeted now, we've talked about a certain amount of business that we were going to lose over this summer season. Whatever incremental we get above and beyond that, we should.
Your market?
Yeah, set it aside. And, you know, maybe that's what we're going to have to do to keep the town alive if, if things really go south.
I think in the early fall, mid fall, or whenever in that October, we'll start, when we start having some budget discussions with you, you can start to get a feel for where we're going to land on our projected 2020 revenue and expenditures and also what we're proposing for 21. And then you're going to have to make some decisions on dipping into your reserves and how much you want to spend in your reserves. You're going to spend another million or $2 to, to backstop some of this stuff. Because while we're going to do better than we anticipated, we're also considerably losing more in our general fund revenues than we anticipated. So we have a lot of people canceling their memberships at the rec center, which, you know, is a significant amount of money that is raised. It's going to be down. We're probably, we could be down a half million dollars in our building, our comm dev and building funds that we do in 2020. So some of those, some of those have to get made up too, based on the, you know, where we're probably doing a little over our revised budget right now. So I think we've got to look at all of that together and, and then you can have, you guys are going to have lots of, lots of decisions. This is only one. I mean, every day we're discussing, you know, how much, what are we going to do with our sustainability activities? You know, just today we're going, how do we start budgeting for, are we going to still want to do a solar program in 21? Are we still going to want to have our green incentive business program? And, you know, and, and from my perspective right now, those are going to be options. Those are going to be options over to the side that when you look at everything, you're going to have to weigh your priorities and say, how important is this? Or maybe that needs to be put on hold per year because this is more important. So there's going to be a lot of those things that we're just going to say they're options. And once you look at everything, you can start to decide, what do you want to grab off the menu and what's going to be the biggest priority for you to fund? And I think it's going to be protecting people and businesses right now. While solar is important, things like solar can wait a year if it has to. I mean, that's the direction we're headed right now. And we're going to start working on these things this month. We're going to start doing our, in August, we'll be starting our projections for 2020. That's one of the first things we do. Well, typically our first thing is looking at all of our staffing issues, but obviously we're not adding any new positions in next year. So it's all about looking at our 2020 projections and so.
Rick, are you seeing, are people leaving the, people who are working for the town, are they leaving at all? Is there any trends there?
A little bit. Yeah, a little bit. I think it's probably happening across the county. I mean, we've lost some employees recently and I think it's, we always lose some employees, but there are some that have left or, you know, maybe it's a, it's a very competitive workplace right now. So I think that people are, there, there are some opportunities, a couple of opportunities that have arisen. And I think personal decisions that people are making, they're, you know, it's just sometimes when things are tough, people relocate maybe back to where they're from. They have more, a stronger support system with family and things to help out. You know, if they have young children or something like that. And so, you know, from an employer standpoint, we're, we're seeing that happen. Not at an alarming rate that would cause me great concern right now, but I think it's probably on par with what the whole community is seeing.
Yeah, that health situation is not great right now. I mean, it's just not. Everybody's running a little late. How about you, Dick?
Yeah, for sure. I, we're, we're seeing, you know, I think we'll see what Congress does. I haven't seen what they did today, but what they settled in on for, for their second or fifth round of relief, whatever it is. But to Rick's point, you know, I think we're going to really need, we're going to, we're going to have to remember Mr. Gallagher's words of wisdom. We're, we're going to need to do some really tough planning, I think, with multiple scenarios. And that worst case scenario is, is going to be very challenging. We need to remember, you know, if we get shut down, whether it's nationally or from the state for the first quarter of the calendar year, that, that's our biggest quarter for sales tax collections, far and away. And that, that's going to be really painful. And it is also going to dig deep into our business community's ability to make it. And so, you know, when we're thinking relief programs, you know, we're going to need to look at based on different scenarios. But if, if one of this, you know, if the scenario comes to fruition that, that we're closed for that first, first quarter of the calendar year, we're going to have a lot of work to do. And I don't think we can hope that doesn't happen. I think we need to do some contingent planning for that. Now, I think that's what Rick's saying, but just saying a little more bluntly. Because I didn't mean to steal, steal what you get ready to say, Gary, but I'm sure you're thinking that.
No, I mean, as things, if things become more dire, just like you're seeing now in, in some areas of the country in the medical community, the hospitals, I mean, they're talking about how they triage patients. You know, which ones can they allow to stay in the hospital and get them on ventilators? And which ones are unlikely to make it, therefore send them home to die? I mean, you know, there comes a point likewise in, you know, in economics and business where sometimes you have to come up with a different kind of a, a planning process to say, where can our limited dollars be most impactful? And the answer oftentimes is you, you can't save everybody. I mean, I'm just talking about the worst of the worst. And those are the kind of decisions I think municipalities and states will have to make if in fact things get worse. It, you know, it's possible. Hopefully it doesn't happen, but it's, it's a possibility. And you have to be thinking about it and be prepared for it.
I, I agree. I think we need to look at, holistically, it would, it would be great to look at like a crisis management plan if we're, because I, I know we've given, we've given to the FERC, we've given to restaurants and retail, which is all great. And we've given to our, our childcare centers, but it would be, I think it would be a good exercise to go through saying, okay, if, if it really hits the fan or if we, if we put money into this area, then what, what happens to this area? You know, like looking at all of the areas holistically, which I think is what this group is saying. But it would be great to see it all outlined, to see how, you know, how is transit going to be affected? How, you know, if, if restaurants and retail close down and people are leaving or are they staying, you know, all of these scenarios. I think it's just hard to, to look at it in silos. So I, I would like to see it, a large plan.
Sorry. That hail?
Yeah, it's dumping. Very heavy rain.
Okay, that's it for the bummer session.
I see locusts out there too.
So if we circle back around, we're going to need direction on what you want to do with this memo.
Is everybody staying with this memo with funding at up to $4,000 a month for four to six businesses right now for the next two months?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm in.
Probably no more than a $50,000 commitment.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Yes.
And then let's hold that 440 grand we got back from the feds. And we're going to start asking for more. Well, I'm going to start hitting the goose up for more money again. Just, that was great, but it's not enough. Alrighty, gang. How about Transit Master Plan? So we've seen this before and I think Jennifer is looking for some questions and then if we're ready to move to a resolution with this. Is that correct, Rick?
Yeah, well, ultimately we, it's probably a little awkward for some of you. You're going, what are we exactly, what would we be adopting? Well, if, if you have nothing but time, you could go pull up all 100 and something pages of the full Transit Master Plan, 200 pages of the master plan and read it. You know, what's, what's difficult right now is that we went in and created this master plan over a period of time. And, and you were briefed on some of this stuff. And certainly the Transit and Parking Advisory Committee was an integral part of this. But then our world got turned upside down and things changed. Not only did we shut transit down, we've also started transit backup with reduced capacity on our buses and with limited route ridership. And, and then we don't see that changing in the near future. And what we're proposing for the winter and what we're proposing for a 2021 budget, transit budget that we're going to talk about next is going to also have reduced routes in that. So for me personally, in the conversations that we've had as staff, when we talk about this, some of the things that, you know, that were outlined in the Transit Master Plan and the Shada worked on relative to different route options that were being proposed, et cetera. Those things aren't really being considered right now. Well, you know, and I'm going to quit talking because I end up going and everything Jen was going to say, but there are some, I think there are embedded in that plan, there are what I'm calling some tenants that we need to continually think about every time we are looking at route assessment or enhancement as we go forward. And that, to, to me, that's part of what we're adopting and if, if we do this as a resolution in the future. So. Jennifer, sorry.
You'll inform me, Rick.
I know. Thanks, Rick. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Rick did pretty much sum it up for you all. So right now what we're asking for is just adoption of the master plan as it is. Knowing that there's a lot of components that we would not put in place at this time. But the Transit Master Plan is something that we would use going forward. Maybe not all of it, maybe just some pieces of it, but it is a, it's a great resource document for us that we can use in the future. So I don't know if you had any questions on the plan itself or just kind of what we were thinking to use from it or just about the memo itself?
We can, we can always add lib, right? I mean, if, it's, this is just kind of giving us a baseline and we can figure out where we go from there. So it's not, it's not like this is set in stone, correct?
Correct. Yeah, this is a, a document that's a guidance document. And it does help us when we have questions that come up. We can point to this document and say, well, this is what's in the plan. Is this something that we want to do? Or is it something that we don't want to do? We want to try something else. But it's a guide for us.
I had a question about the capital improvements that you guys had planned. There, I think there were four of them outlined. And one was the northbound stop and not pulling into City Market. Is that something that you guys think you might do in the near future? Or is that part of like a bigger part of the plan?
It's probably a bigger part of the plan, knowing on, there's going to be some development in that area. I think initially that stop would be great. So we wouldn't have to go into city markets, not our property as it is, but that stop on the highway nine would require CDOT involvement too.
Okay. And then what about, I, I didn't see, but it could have been buried in there, the road alignment as far as it said that if there was.
Are you, you froze up, Kelly?
I lost.
That help? Am I frozen? I feel like. Sorry. Is it working again now?
Yeah, I can't see you, but we can hear you.
That's a better face at least.
I'm just going to stop talking.
Other questions?
I didn't catch your question, Kelly. I don't know if you can say it again or we can.
Nothing. We are not going to make any changes to operational changes without running them by committee and council. So anything that's laid out in there, other than we will always continue to look at how we make the system more user friendly from our application standpoint, how we're, the signage that we're using and what additional signage we can enhance at our, at our transit stops to help educate people. Those are things that we're going to continuously try to improve upon. But any operational system changes will be vetted before they would be implemented. So just because something might be listed as an option that we're looking at, those things are off the table right now. Because what, what we're proposing to you in this next section is our winter plan. So.
I, I'm supportive of it. I think right now as we're scaling down to, to try to find some room in the budget, this, this kind of guidance document is more important than ever as we come out of, of this economic, you know, whatever called it. But as we come out, we start scaling back up, I think these, this is going to be a critical piece for the team to, to refer to, you know, as we scale back up. So I, I'm supportive of it. I, I look forward to the day when we can actually pull it off shelf and start using it and really dive into it. So.
And I second what Dick, I approve the Transit Master Plan because I love the idea that it's designed to be fluid. And I know that staff will. And I know that staff will just keep on trucking with it, and it's a good, it's a good start. Eric?
I'm fine with it as well. I see it as guiding principles. It's not. It's not commandments, so they're principles and it gives you a lot of room. A lot of room to work and innovate.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'm in.
Aaron?
I'm good with it. We still need goals and objectives.
Kayla? All right, there you go. All in, all in. Thank you. Let's go on to the important stuff, the winter. Plan.
And I wanna I wanna lay a little bit of foundation before you start this. Fairly self-explanatory document of what we're trying to do, but you may have questions. I think, you know, Kelly asked a very insightful question last week, wondering how are we supposed to be making? You know, these types of decisions now relative to dollars when we haven't seen the full budget. And the answer is because. We cannot wait. We don't have the luxury of of planning a winter season and waiting until. We do our full budget stuff in, you know, in October with the council and start to do that because. We won't have time to engage in contracts with private. Companies if that's the route we go, we don't have, we have to start hiring our winter seasonal staff. We're trying to shift from more. Less full time to to seasonal positions and utilize them more and. That stuff just, you know, it has to start, those things have to start happening soon. Plus, if we can decide, I mean, the proposal you have in front of you is a million dollar cut, right? That's a million dollars off of where we started. 2020. That's that's big. That's a big deal, and I think still offering. A pretty big delivery of services to the community. And if we if we can settle on this. If we can settle on this, that's one last piece of the pie we can plug into this to the bigger picture we're talking about. And and know going forward, plus we could start planning and doing what we need to do to kick that off. So. What we're asking you when when we discuss this is this is how we want to go through the winter and then you would have. Almost identical summer season to what we're doing currently right now. Obviously, with any of these things, if our world changes and we go back to. To feeling comfortable, we can always, it's easier to add two things if we have to down the road, so. That's kind of why we're addressing this thing today instead of not doing it as part of the budget.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. It's a new reality.
James, Jennifer, anything you want to add or do you want to just, you know? I want to make sure you guys all are familiar with the proposed routes and and what it is. Obviously, you know. That the elephant in the room we got to talk about is the Upper Warriors Mark Shuttle. I don't know what you you ended up with 90 or 100 emails from people was obviously shows. How much they want to to keep that up there or at least keep. What might be a reduced part of what it was in the future, but I'd like to see you make sure we kind of agree to all the other aspects of what's being proposed and then. Let you have your conversations relative to Upper Warriors Mark after that.
So in the packet, there there's the memo, and I also attached some slides just to give you some. Illustration on just some of the information that I put in there. So I just didn't know if you had any questions on just some of the initial. Information in the memo itself, or if you just wanted to get into actual proposed winter plan for 2021.
Questions? No, well, let's just get into it then, Jen.
Sure. And so what we're proposing for so 20 in the 2021, so our our winter season obviously overlaps years. And so some of the the changes, the major changes. One of them is recommending to start later in the season, and so this is just really based on ridership numbers. Ridership is, let me say, it's it's the lowest in November and April for our winter season, and so if we did. Start our season a little bit later in December, that would help save on some staffing for us. Just wanted to see if initial thoughts on that.
Yeah. How's everybody feel? I think that's a great idea.
Does the ski area pick up any of the? The ridership from the transportation center up? For their employees? Because they ride the gondola, right?
They do, but they, so depending on when the ski resort would start their their winter service. So say they start operations the beginning of of November. They would most likely, I think, start their transportation services around that time, and they do run a. Kind of a red route which goes into the airport road lot to Breck Station, and then they can go up on the black route. To any of the the resort area.
Thank you.
Do we know if they're changing their service? Do we know anything about what they're doing?
You know, not right now. I know they are wanting to run service for the winter at 100% is what they had said to us last time. I just don't know what 100% means, you know, as far as their operations, their transit. They did run several routes last year, which we're hoping that they run again. So black. Blue, red, peak day shuttle and ski hill shuttle. So those are all really important supplemental service to ours.
And there there's a big piece of that in that we don't know. Number one, how they're gonna open and number two, at what capacity? And I don't even know how they would limit their capacity, so there's gonna be. And then we don't have South Gondola open, which will be, you know, this will probably be the best year to do it, but. It's also going to be a tough year because we were originally expecting just to. Have everybody park out of the airport and shuttle a ton of people in. If you can only put 20 people on a bus at any one time. Or 10, then, you know, this. This conversation will be really in flux as we go on. You know, with this piece about trying to get people into town who can't park in town.
Yeah, I would say the capacity limits are going to be our biggest struggle as we get into the winter season, and so right now it's 25 per bus. Because we have larger buses, but if that stays the same into winter, it's going to be a little bit of a struggle. So it's it's good with starting a little bit later. The next big change is the reduction of trolley. And so if you look on the some of the slides, and I'm sorry, the slides are probably kind of small and a little bit harder to read, but. There's one on page three of the actual slide information, and it's just the trolley ridership. And so you can just see the peak times, how it starts to dwindle off in the afternoon, and and so that's why we're recommending to. Shorten up the trolley service a little bit, and so we would start a little bit later in the day at 11 o'clock and then run it until 8 o'clock. And it would just be one trolley, so there wouldn't be 15 minute service. There would just be 30. And so that's another big difference from.
How's everybody feel about the trolley?
Hey, I think it's a great approach. Jen, I. You know, we need to to save where we can, and it's nice to not eliminate it altogether.
See, I think this is low hanging fruit. I think this is what gets cut. I I think we shutter the trolley for the time being. There there's no, we didn't use it all summer long. I I think we just don't run the trolley at this point until we're made whole again. Your ridership on the trolley will only probably be seven to 10 people with the size of it. You know, it doesn't, it it serves a need in that it helps the guest get up and down Main Street and get to the troll. I think that is a lower priority right now than moving. People that have driven into town into town and people that need to work in town into town. So. If I were to cut anything out of your suggestion, it would be the entire trolley for the season. I know that's probably not super popular, but I I think is that's an easy bunch of money we can save.
I hate saying it, but I agree. I I think it's, I I love the trolley. I think it's a fantastic idea, but I also, I agree with Eric. It's not. As essential as some of these other routes.
I agree with one caveat. I I I think we should make it the first second tier cut. I I I think it's it's important to many of the businesses on Main Street. That aren't in close proximity to. The the Transit Center, the parking lots, etc. It's, you know, they're not, they're not in that 100 block, you know, I think it spreads people north and south and. And it's helpful, so I I I agree that it's low hanging fruit, but I guess I would prefer to put it on a. On a second tier cut as opposed to a first tier cut.
How's everybody else feel?
What kind of money are we talking about?
You know, I would have to do the exact calculation for the trolley, you know, exactly what that would mean for operations.
Just a rough number, I mean. 200,000?
No, if we run it every day, I'm thinking maybe 50, 60, and that's just a really shot in the dark there.
Okay.
Per month?
No, for the season.
For the season, okay.
Yeah.
If it's not every 15 minutes, if it serves the same purpose, if people will use it. Frequently like they they had before.
Yeah, you would, you wonder, that was something that we thought about too, is it wouldn't be such a novelty if it's not every 15 minutes. And I'll do the exact calculation on the operational cost for that. The other thing you can think about too is if we we start out not running it. And it seems that there's a lot of people on Main Street, capacity limits get lifted. Maybe then we add it back in the middle of the year. It's definitely an option, and if we have the personnel to do that, that wouldn't be that hard for us.
See, I think if you're gonna do the trolley, I think you've got to run it every 15 minutes. Because of the capacity limitations, you try to stretch it out and run it to every 30 or whatever. It just strikes me that you're not going to be moving. You're not going to be moving anybody or or very, very little. So I think if. I mean, for $50,000, I know, Jen, you haven't run the number. This is your guess. But if we're talking $50,000, I think I could lean to, you know, to Dick's suggestion, which could be. Let's just see how how much it is used. And if we decide we need. It's not A, not being used, or B, we need to find some money, some some additional monies. Then it could become the first cut for the tier two, so.
Jen, is the season that you're talking about December to March?
Through April. So starting.
I think.
Yeah.
Because I think that, you know, if it would help to maybe, you know, just play with it, but get it so it runs every 15 minutes, but only run it. You know, middle of December to middle of March, maybe that would. Meet more expectations and. Shave a little bit off.
I like, I'm in favor of Dick's idea. Let's let's definitely cut it, but let's make it a tier one cut.
Tier two. Right?
Tier two. This many.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll keep it on, and then if if needed, we'll make that cut. Other options for winter service is to keep the same. End date or end time at 10:15 like we have for summer. It's just based on the ridership numbers for the evening. It's. It does get pretty reduced starting around 9 o'clock, so we would keep that. And keep purple as it is right now. And then the plus is that we would want to add an airport express route. So Airport Express would go, it's just that it's an express route. It goes right from the station to Airport Road Lot, and it just does a loop. For a few hours in the morning and a few hours in the evening and really focusing on those key times where we have people coming to the mountain.
Now, initially. That's a terrific. Recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay. And initially, we would just do this Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The hope would be is that the ski resort would run their red route, and the red route does go into Airport Road Lot. It does go to the station. And I believe it's 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., so that would help with that, any congestion there.
Yeah, I think it's great, Jen, and I I really like the cutting at 10 something because I suspect that the. Late night shutdown of. As far as a restaurant's not going to go away.
That that's going to continue.
Yeah.
And then purple, any comments on purple, keeping it as is?
I think it's worked pretty well. Doing it this way.
I'm I'm all for everything that is proposed, but I'll just, I'll just point out if. The late night curfew remains into effect, we might have, it it might do something with our early morning ridership, so. You might just be aware of that.
I wouldn't count on it. Don't find elsewhere to go.
Oh, home drinking.
And then through all of this, though, as you know, we do these recommendations, just like we did with summer, we. You know, we're constantly monitoring where the ridership is, and as long as we have personnel to operate service, we can tweak some of these. Orders of start, especially starting in the airport road express, maybe it's something we have to run every day, and of course, we would be really conscious of the budget. But we have some flexibility in this to to plus or minus our service. And so I think the last piece is is what you all have received lots of feedback on, but that is the Upper Warriors Mark Warriors Mark contract. And so we have contracted that service for the past few years, and we are recommending to not run that service for this coming winter.
How much would it cost us to run a limited? Upper Warriors Mark, some. Something. You know, first of all, there's a good chance with the size of those vans, they'll only be able to have, what, five people in them at any one time?
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Have have you looked at a scenario where you, you know, run it 50% or, I don't know, some some number?
Yeah, so if we ran it, so November and April are the the least amount of ridership. It's very, you know, similar to our ridership. You just see more people here December through through March. And so if we ran it for just December through March, it would be. About a $30,000 or about $40,000 savings in that contract. Which is something that we were already talking about even prior to some of these budget considerations and everything.
What's the full cost of that? Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go.
The full, the the cost has been 158,000 for the past two years. So and then we do put this out for bid every year that we have run this, and we have only received one interested business, which is Peak One. That could be different for this year. Maybe we will have more interest, which will allow some more negotiation. I do think the rate that Peak One offers us is very fair. I don't really see anything that's a major concern with that. So if we did cut off that November and April timeframe, we would be saving some money.
Do you say 158,000 for both years or are you saying per year for the last two years?
Per season.
Per season, okay.
So starting in November and ending in April is what we've ran for the past couple of years.
Okay, and we just don't have the vans? We don't, we don't have the option to take that in house, right?
We do not. We do not have any of the smaller sprinter type vans that they use to get around that area, or buses are a little too big to maneuver around safely. And then just, we just, you know, we wouldn't have, we would need additional staff to run that too.
I'll add in there that it's definitely something that we're talking about internally, that we could probably save some money in the future if we do, if we take this in house. But, you know, the the advantage with the Sprinter vans is they don't require a CDL license. So you have a little more flexibility in your hiring. But, you know, there there are other issues we have to work out, but it's something that in the future, you know, we're, what we're proposing. You know, when we when we said that we would propose canceling that route was a was a one season cancellation. But we also realized that, and and I think you heard from many of the people that wrote in that. That they would. Uh, but we also realized that, a, and I think you heard from many of the people that wrote in that uh, that they would uh, that, you know, try to go for a reduction in the route and use it during the peak periods. And I think when we say December to March, we're saying mid-December probably, which is really the, the peak period of when that starts uh through the end of March, or at least that first weekend in April. You know, under a normal season, we move about eighteen thousand people on that route, which is, while, you know, it's not as big compared to some of our other routes, it's still a significant number of cars off of the road. And I, that's the reason that we do this. So even, you know, if, if you're looking at, you know, and I'm sure all of you are trying to weigh the importance of this, and um I think that's, you know, one where I agree with what Eric was saying is, while, you know, the trolley is important, but the trolley isn't necessarily keeping a parked car off the road. Um, but it uh, you know, this does. I mean, even if you only haul, you know, half those people, you know, at nine or ten thousand people, you're still, that's still, you know, several thousand cars that we're trying to keep from driving into town and park uh when we're gonna have limited parking capacity. So there, there's merits on both sides of this, and certainly we understand that. I think my job was just to try to make some tough decisions early on. That's why I presented it to you that way.
You know, when we compare it to the, to the trolley, the, the people that use the trolley could in fact walk. Uh, the people in Warriors Mark, that, you know, there's some, there's not even sidewalks up there. They, they definitely will drive, so. Point that out.
Hey Jennifer, what um, what did Upper Warriors Mark do before the town provided bus service?
I believe they had their own HOA that provided some sort of shuttle.
They did a thing, what was it called? Plan B or something like that? They had a, they had some other contract that they were doing. It wasn't, I don't think it was great, which is why they had kept, they kept asking us to help them out. I mean, like Rick says, that, the real reason for this, you know, it's eight dollars and seventy-seven cents for passengers, what we pay. The reason we do that is to keep those cars out of town. That's, in the end, that's why we do it, and with North Gondola or South Gondola being closed, there, you know, I think if we start in the middle of December, we let the transit crew figure out some other savings in between, we will know not far into the start of next year what things look like. We'll make whatever adjustments we have to. And everybody needs to understand that if things really go in the toilet, they may lose service. I, it might not just be Upper Warriors Mark, it might be, you know, it might be all service. So this is gonna be a moving target. We can say till the end of March right now, but things might be good too. Vaccine might come at the end of the year. We may get back to business. In April might be strong. We might decide at that point. So when you're talking to the, the contract, um, the operator about how to do this, there is the, we want the opportunity to extend into the end of the sea, ski season, if things return to normal. We also want the opportunity to pull the plug. I don't know how you, you know, I don't know if it's possible to work that into your contract, but um, you know, it, it would be valuable to be able to modify service as time goes on and not get
Yeah.
you know, worked into a contract that we can't modify, and scary is closed, and we're running a bus up there, and nobody's there, so.
Eric, we pulled the plug this year, so.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't charge us the full uh contract price once we stopped, because it shut, everything shut down, so.
Yeah, I would. I would just like to say that if, if it's between the Warriors Mark shuttle and the trolley, I would choose the Warriors Mark shuttle, at least, you know, to try that out because of keeping um, well, I guess because it serves maybe a few locals. We certainly heard that it, it serves, it sounds like mostly short-term rentals and um, and rentals of some sort, but it sounds like, you know, some homeowners that are local to our town, I think that's great, and the trolley is probably mostly tourists, and it keeps them, keeps some cars off the road.
But question, I, I mean, Kelly touched on it. It, it does seem like it's mostly short-term rentals up there. So it kind of feels like a, a, a business um situation. So I, I'd be curious to know how many short-term rental licenses are up there, I mean, have been issued for that neighborhood? And if it's a significant number, which I think we suspect it is, that might push me to, towards asking them to contribute and, and do a public-private funding situation of, of a shuttle. I, I, I agree with the comments that we, we do need to keep the cars out of town, but we're also scrapping for pennies and, or dollars and, and uh, so, I don't know, I, you know, I always try to look for some data for, for the decision, and, and the short-term rental licenses issued up there could give us some insight as to what we're anecdotally thinking is the case, cause, you know, if it really is mostly short-term rentals, I think it is appropriate to ask for them to contribute.
I think that's, I agree with Dick.
Some of the letters that have come in recently indicated that they may be willing to contribute. Um, so I think we should definitely look into that.
But I, I also agree with Kelly. If I have to cut, cut one thing, I'd cut the trolley and keep the Warriors Mark, and I, but I, again, I think it'd be nice to have a private-public partnership as well up there.
Don't forget too, all of our buses also service short-term rentals. Every.
Thirty, remember, we have thirty-six hundred short-term rental licenses in town.
What we need to start thinking about is as we come out of COVID and we're looking for solutions to budget issues, we've already talked about a short-term rental tax to cover childcare and transit. And this would be the impetus to go down that road. You know, I don't know if I would do that now, Dick. I would look for, I would look for shortened service, try to find some budget um things so that there's not, you know, unless Dennis, they come to us and they say, hey, look, we understand that you want to cut the budget, you want to go to a hundred grand. We're, we're willing to pitch in fifty-eight thousand dollars to get full service. That'd be great. I don't really want to pressure uh them because we haven't done it anywhere else, and I feel, I don't know. I'd rather start talking about this in a larger, a larger um scope to solve some other problems that we have. Back to your point earlier about twenty-twenty-one, uh Kelly and Dick.
Good point.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent supportive of the larger scope.
Alrighty, what else we got?
I think that was the main points for the changes for um service, and so just the, a caveat I'll throw out there is that we will go out for a request for bid for this service to see, you know, who is interested, and maybe we'll have more than just Peak One. Um, but I'll say, leave that button there, um, just not knowing who's going to bid on it, and um the costs, and also those COVID protocols, some agencies might not be wanting to even operate. Um, I know Peak One, I did reach out to them, and they are interested in operating for not just the service, but just in general, operating for winter. Um, so I guess there's just be more to come. Um, I just wanted to mention that. There's no, no guarantee.
I think there's also, yeah, and the efficiency of it is no guarantee. So, you know, there, there could possibly, if we're limited to seven people, there will be people left along the side of the road at times, and uh, you know what? Don't call and complain, cause that's the reality of the situation right now, so.
We're gonna have to make sure we message that with Upper Warriors Mark Home Motor Group. I mean, as well as everybody else, James, we're gonna have to have some kind of messaging at the bus stops that explain that, I think, townwide. You know, we'll have some of those days where there's a ton of people standing on the yellow route, and they will not be able to get on the bus because we have a limited service, and I'm, I'm not even sure how the drivers are gonna handle that. Um, and how they're gonna uh do that, so that, that's gonna really be sort of a townwide issue, and we need good messaging around that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, Eric, and we've, you know, we've started some discussions already that, you know, the, the part of the summer operation plan is really centered around being able to have the windows open on the bus, and it's just a much different situation, obviously, in summer than winter, and so we've already started some of those discussions in terms of what we're gonna be able to do with the filters on the buses, and obviously, having the windows closed, particularly on the um electric bus is, is critical, because otherwise you're just using all your uh battery life on, on the electric buses, and we won't get the kind of um hours of service out of them that we do now, so. But, you know, those are all good comments, Eric. Um, it's gonna be a different message for sure.
As I can tell, you guess that looking at an empty table and you tell them the dining room's full are a little challenging at times.
I'm already doing that. That's a pain in the ass.
Yes.
Can we sit there? No, you can't, sorry. Okay, is that enough to go on, Jennifer?
Yes, that's very helpful. I really appreciate everybody's feedback, and so we will go with this plan with the exception of um adding back Upper Warriors Mark, um, just for the shortened season of December through March.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we have uh one more thing to do before work session, or uh
Dex.
Exterior lighting policy conformance date.
Thank you all. Um, as you know, the um town adopted the exterior lighting chapter in two thousand and seven as it sits today with a few modifications since. When we did that, it was such a major rewrite. We put in a conformance date fifteen years down the road. Um, and it was based on the IRS depreciation table for the exterior light fixtures. Um, that timeframe is actually coming up here in two years. Our plan at that time had always been to send out a letter to property owners two years in advance to remind them about the date so that they can, you know, start their planning for new fixtures or retrofits as necessary. So with that, we came before you in March and had some public comment from the Cedars HOA, and I've worked with um them as well as multiple property owners taking a look at what they've got um existing out there. Um, we did talk a lot about, you know, could some temporary solutions be possible, such as dark sky bulbs, to essentially block out the sides of the light bulb, um, and then so the light would just shine straight down. Um, also, there are these temporary metal sleeves that screw, the light bulb screws into, that's separate from the fixture. Um, staff's not recommending those temporary solutions because it's extremely difficult for the staff to enforce something that is, is easy to change as a light bulb. Um, we just don't have the, the staff to do that, and, and the consistency of enforcement would um be impossible to achieve. So um staff has recommended that we um go with a permanent material lining, um metal lining that can be applied to the interior of the sides, should people want to modify their existing light fixtures, not replace the actual fixtures themselves. Um, that brings us to, again, the conformance date. You know, it's not a easy time for anybody right now, as we've been discussing um budget. Um, so staff also um has discussed the possibility of pushing this two-year timeframe back um to allow people some additional time to maybe fund this um and come up with solutions as well. Um, so staff recommended an additional three years. Um, council can go with whatever date. We're not tied to anything um at all, so that would be essentially five years from now, um that this conformance date would happen. Yeah, but we're open to any suggestions that the council has. We're not tied really to a timeframe. Um, I just wanted to explain that temporary um solution issue.
How's everybody? Uh, first of all, anybody have questions about this? Everybody understand what we're talking about?
What do we generally talk about, Julia? In terms of, what would the, what would the cost be on average of putting, I'll call it an internal shield within the, the fixture?
Um, well, it's gonna depend on who you work with, but um, would it, I don't have a good cost for you, I guess, Gary. It's gonna be somebody applying this um metal, basically like a metal sheet, like sheet metal in the inside of the fixture. Um, we've had a lot of newer homes um come in with those, and they just take the decorative fixtures, but they put this metal insert in there. Um, I've never heard anybody talk about um cost issue with it. Um, but again, they're building a new home at that point, so um I can look into that, though.
I guess the question is, should we make our decision assuming that we're not talking about something that's cost prohibitive?
Right.
I'll, I'll remind you, I'll remind the council that when, when we had this in a, in a, back when we were meeting in our public setting, you recall there were issues came up about all the waste that we're creating also, right? So that's, the retrofitting is, is one way of not ending up with a bunch of old fixtures in a landfill somewhere. In doing that, I would imagine if you're, I don't know if every uh fixture is able to be retrofitted, we, but the ones that are, it's probably a fairly minimal cost per um, per fixture.
I'm supportive of staff's recommendation that we, if we are gonna allow retrofitting, that it be more of the permanent style of a metal. I, I agree with Julia that it's, that enforcement will be nearly impossible with more of a temporary light bulb type approach.
Yeah.
I also agree with staff that we should push out the fifteen-year. If you guys feel like three years is right, I was thinking too, but whatever. I mean, I think they both work, but I think in light of the financial burden that I think a lot of these, if they're rental units or whatever, are going through right now, we give them a little more time to, to uh work on their budgets to, to get this done. I do, however, think anyone doing remodels, you know, we need to stick to our guns, I'm assuming we are, but, but require them to come up to code if they come in for a permit at this time, so.
Yes, we would still enforce that piece of the code. So any remodels or exterior reskins, any replacements would be conforming.
And everything new is conforming, right?
Everything since two thousand and seven.
Okay.
Or mean, or anything that has had a remodel um since two thousand and seven should also be conforming.
So, yeah, I think since, since this is cumulative, right, with, with dark skies, it's cumulative philosophy of, you know, additional light, I think adding two years is okay, especially right now. You know, I, I it's, it's not, and who knows how long this economy will take to snap back, so I, I'm fine with two, three years. I think that's, that's fine, knowing that we are heading, albeit maybe slowly, in the right direction toward this dark sky objective.
I'm okay with staff's recommendations as well, and I'm, I'm fine with twenty-twenty-five.
Dennis?
You're muted, Dennis.
Sorry about that. I just saw Tim Berry show up, so I thought maybe Tim had some input.
I, I just wanted to point out to the council that the twenty-twenty-two deadline is in the dark sky ordinance. So if we're going to change that deadline, it'll have to be done by ordinance. Uh, it's not a problem. We still have the ability to do legislation, even though we don't have any tonight. Um, but uh, yeah, by ordinance, but it would be great getting council direction on what the ordinance says.
I mean, I, it seems like Aaron uh and Kelly, you still need to, Jeffrey, weigh in.
I'm uh, I'm, I'm with um, with Dick on this. I think we have bigger fish to fry. I guess I'm with Aaron as well. Um, yeah, I, I think we can push this down the road a little bit. I do think the uh, the, the retrofitting, I, I agree with staff, suffice to say.
Kelly, you good?
Me, I am, and Julia, I really appreciate you figuring out a solution like this. I think this is a great solution for everyone, and um, and I, I still think the dark sky compliance is really, really important for our community, both for people who live here and who visit. I mean, um, it really adds a huge element to what we provide as a town, so.
Aaron?
Thank you for your work on this.
I already spoke. I'm good. I already spoke. I'm good.
All right. So, Tim, it looks like what we're looking for is some language about being able to retrofit with a permanent, permanent metal shield and continuation of the date to 2025.
Do that for the next council meeting.
That's great.
Yeah, we'll have to put that in an ordinance, Tim.
Jeffrey, I believe you're right.
Yeah, I'll be the mayor, so I'll, I'll, I'll shepherd that through at the time.
Make all the motions if you're the mayor.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, oh, Kelly won't be there. I'm gonna deputize number eight, Dennis.
Nice.
Yeah, I was complimenting Tim earlier. I should have realized that it's really Jeffrey behind Tim that's really making these things happen.
Behind every, behind every great attorney is a, a, a pretty fair felon.
Is it, is a guy from Boston eating Ritalin during a meeting? All right, we good? Okay, we have a motion for.
Eric, please. There's a couple of ways we could handle the agenda going forward here. We could, while we still have people tuned in and listening, if we wanted to cover some of our committee reports from the night meeting, there were anything from the town manager, we could do that before we go into exec session. Or we go into exec session and then we have to come, then we come back in to this Zoom meeting and finish those items up. Because I think we're going to have time to go through some stuff here.
How much time do we need in the exec?
Maybe 30 minutes.
So let's do a half an hour and get out of here quicker later. Everybody good? Does anybody need a five-minute bathroom break? Okay, five minutes. Be back here 5:55. We'll continue some business and then they're already gone. Everybody's gone. Everybody left me. All right, Kelly, let us go to report of the town manager and staff, Rick.
First thing I want to do is settle a time for the August 5th, 4th special meeting, a week from today. Afternoons are problematic, so early morning would work the best for the town and at least one or two of you. But I haven't heard from some others, so. And Gary, I didn't include you because you won't be here, so.
Rick, I'm good with eight or 8:30. Whatever works.
Fine, anytime in the morning, Rick. Yeah, I'm fine.
Could we start at 8:05 so that I have five minutes to drop my kid off at school?
We could do.
So Cory, so Cory doesn't have to do it for me.
I'd like to start at 8:07.
Okay, seems reasonable.
You want to do 8:30?
I really can do 8:05. I just need those five minutes. So whatever's best for the group is great.
How far is it from the school to your house?
Five minutes, obviously.
It's like three minutes, so I would even have like time to calm down. No, 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 on my bike with my mask on.
Aaron, is your schedule okay that morning?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd probably prefer 8:05 to 8:30 if possible, but if not, it's.
We'll definitely do 8:05.
8:05.
8:05.
8:05 on Tuesday the 4th, we'll get that posted. We'll try to, you know, maybe it's an hour. If we get to business and don't talk too much, so.
Yeah, good luck with that. Purely COVID-related. COVID update.
Yeah. The other thing, so back in the, at the start of the year, which seems like an eternity ago, we, we were discussing, if you recall, we had implemented our new occupancy rules for short-term rental. So what is in place is two per bedroom plus four. And that rule, I, I, why, it went into effect January 1, I guess. And you had some, I think you had some written communication. You had a couple of people from the different management companies show up in person at your council meetings and say, you know, that with, there are some properties in town that, that we manage that were built for more people and designed for more people. And we would like you to look at making some exceptions or having some variances available in your ordinance. And we went out, we listened to them, we talked to them separately. We also met with a group of the HOAs out of the Highlands neighborhood who had the opposite concerns, who very much, very much wanted the town to continue to support the two per bed, two per bedroom plus four. And we were kind of positioned to bring it back to the council and, and have some additional discussion and decide what, if anything, were, you know, were you guys going to do? And then obviously COVID hit. You know, now they're just glad to be open again. But we have had some recent inquiries from one of those people that were, you know, had come in front of you before, wanting to know if the town, if the council is going to talk about this again. And so what I'm asking you is, do you want to talk about it again? I could tell you that, that the Highlands still feels very strong, every one of those HOAs in that neighborhood. And they adopted their own HOA guidelines to only allow two per bedroom plus four in there. So, you know, do you, do you want to discuss the opportunity for any variances for larger homes? Or do you think now it's the worst time in the world that you'd want to stick more people in the house anyway, so?
Hey, Rick, question. What did some of the other, so the Highlands is for it. How about some that were against it? What's their, what's their main argument?
Highlands is for what?
For sticking with two per bedroom plus four.
Oh, the people that, the ones that have, there are some very large homes up on Peak Eight that are, you know, have lots of bedrooms. And even if they don't have lots of bedrooms, they have loft, they have the loft space. And they're just designed to hold, and they advertise, I mean, you can still go online and I could find a dozen violations in two minutes on VRBO of people that are advertising sleeps more than it's supposed to. But, you know, that's an enforcement, a thing that we'll be working on. But, yeah, they think they're, they're designed to hold 30 to 35 people, some of those homes, in their minds, so.
What, what?
I think we wait till next summer because I think you hit nail on the head, right? Right now, you know, it is, it's important to keep the numbers down. So I, you know, I, I would be in favor of bringing the, bringing it back for discussion next summer.
What, Dennis, one of the, one of the things that came up was that, you know, some of these places have rooms with 10 bunk beds in it. You know, and one of our arguments is they're not parked adequately, some of them, for that kind of, for that kind of occupancy. Plus, it's a strain on the neighbors. It's a strain on the neighborhood. You know, there, there are obviously arguments on both sides. I think Dick and Rick are right, though. This is not the time to be. The real question is, is anybody interested in seeing this again at all anyway? Or are we good with where we are?
I'm okay with where we are.
If I was still on council after this evening, I'd say, I think we provided plenty of flexibility to date. I would not want to see this issue. I wouldn't want to talk about this anymore.
Aaron?
I, I'm, I'm good not talking about it again. I mean, this, this council is ever-changing. So, you know, we'll see what, what somebody new comes in and says. But right now, I'm, I agree with my co-council people.
Kelly?
Yeah, I have no interest in, these bigger homes are just, you know, they are a burden on the neighborhood and the home prices and traffic, parking, noise, all of it. I don't have any interest in revisiting this issue.
Dennis? You're muted. Yeah, I'm going to get that right. I am, I'm good with not revisiting. All right. Very good. What else you got, Rick?
That's it.
All right, report of mayor and town council. We did have, I can't even remember when our last meeting was. So on the 15th. My brain is mush. On the 15th, Rick and I, just to backtrack, I'm sure you all know about this. Rick and I were on a call with staff for Polis's office. And it was just the county. So it was Scott Vargo and Mayor Sandquist from Silverthorne, and then all the, all the managers of all the towns. And we really pushed during that meeting for a statewide mask, mask mandate that then a couple of days later, the Congress, the governor put into effect. I'm pretty sure the reason for inviting us to that meeting was for a little bit of political cover. We did write a letter that I signed that said that this would be helpful to us as a community in the same way that the mask mandate on Main Street helps our businesses. A mask mandate in the state of Colorado helps our town. So it was great to, to see that work. Also, on the 15th, we had a resiliency meeting that I showed up late to because I was on a phone with, with the governor. And we did talk about some strategies for the winter. And, you know, I think Shannon and Lucy are working towards, outside of what business owners will be coming to us with, some ideas for things we can do to give everybody a little more room outside of their businesses. So there is another meeting on Wednesday, right? Is that tomorrow? It's Wednesday. Oh, my God. Anyway, there's a meeting tomorrow. I'll be there. Yeah, so that's what I got. Dick?
Nothing really. I don't have anything.
Okay, Jeffrey?
No, but I will be, we have housing next meeting, right? Next Tuesday?
Nothing here. Gary, any final thoughts? Aaron?
Yeah, we had a BOSAC meeting last night. We met at the rec center outside. It was lovely to actually see people in real life, which was my first meeting held in real life. So we had a field season updates where the, due to a variety of factors, there, they've been short-staffed throughout the month of July. But Open Space has been working on several different trails and projects around Breckenridge. And they had their first Friends of the Breckenridge, Friends of Breckenridge Trails on July 11. And it was attended with 32 volunteers and they constructed 800 feet of trail on the new Barney Ford hiking and mountain bike uphill trail. They also had another event on the 25th. But we, which was for the forest health treatment and the Barney Ford clear cut. And there'll be several other events on August 8th, August 22nd. And September 12th, we're hoping to do a BOSAC Trails Day on September 12th. And this is all, you know, all of the protocols for these trail days have been updated to accommodate COVID safety protocols. So it looks a little bit different, but we had a good report back that it was working well. The Beckettall Trail Project has been put on hold. The Beckettall Trail is located near the Ski and Racket Club. The reason is because their HOA, their, their people, their board, or at least one person has concerns about whether it's the county property or not, the county street. And they believe that has something to do with their trail access. They do not have a leg to stand on. So that will be resolved. The Mineral Hill Trail have, okay, so there are, there are a bunch of trails that are being proposed that will require NEPA analysis. So we discussed that a bit. We discussed the cucumber gulch preserve. This is something for everybody to know. There are very large groups using cucumber gulch, which is not supposed to happen. If, I didn't know this, but the max, I, because I've never needed to. But the max group size is supposed to be like around eight. And there are groups of like 30 to 40 people congregating. And it's a bit of a mess. People are like throwing rocks into the water and dogs are running around, which they're not supposed to do that either. So it's a bit of an issue. So Ann and her team are looking into ways to solve it. One of the options might be to just do guided tours through cucumber gulch, which I think is a really interesting idea because it would be something that people could participate in that would include some good education about the cucumber gulch, which I think a lot of visitors and locals might find interesting. And it's really good to know because we put a lot of effort into preserving that area of our community. So across the street from the rec center, you know, near the mobile home park, there is a beaver diversion fencing in, on Cucumber Creek that has just been installed because the beavers keep on building dams and it creates a lot of issues. So it's, it's kind of interesting. Eco-metrics and our staff came up with this idea of this fencing, I wish I could show you my screen, this like fencing ramp that disallows beavers to build dams. So that's a, it's a cool solution that doesn't involve moving the beavers or worse.
Killing them. You know, Scott Reed came upon some people in the cucumber gulch one time. It was a Boy Scout troop and the Boy Scout leader was boiling a elk's head in a, remember that, Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Before we had put any fencing up. He was out there standing in the middle of the water and they were boiling a elk head.
I was there. It was a BOSAC meeting.
That's right. That was a BOSAC meeting. Oh. Had cell phones back then and we could have filmed that. That was fantastic.
Oh, I forgot something else. But there's also going to be some new signage per, I believe Jeffrey's recommendation. Fun new signage that will go around on the trails to, or to encourage people not to be jerks on trails.
And Nikki's, Nikki's designing it, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I brought up the idea of, you know, inclusivity in our social equity efforts in our signage. And they're all animals. And they assured me that the only people who would take offense to it are people who are into Strava.
Oh, yes, they will.
Why? What? I, I didn't get that. I.
Go fast. Get out of my way. I'm trying to go fast. Listen, we have too many trails in town that are social, really very social. People walking around their neighborhood. That's what those trails have become.
Yeah.
Guys can't be out trying to do Strava laps just because they're wearing tights. That's what I think.
Me too. And I wear tights, but it doesn't allow me any special privileges. No, it looks good.
Um, so I attended the red, white, and blue board meeting this week. And I think a really cool thing about our mask ordinance that. cool thing about our mask ordinance that I didn't really first see, but is a huge benefit is how it's protecting our first responders. They said that it's much, like, so much more common for them to go to a place where people are wearing masks or they realize they need to put it on as soon as, as soon as our guys are out there. So I thought that was awesome. They said they've been on Main Street a lot and definitely have seen great compliance. So they wanted to thank us for taking that, undertaking that. And then also for childcare, the tuition assistance, Lori mentioned this, but tuition assistance program closed for applications. And we got 62 applications. It sounds like we'll be getting 64. There were people, a couple of people who, for whatever reason, weren't able to do it within the time period. That number that we had talked about earlier, about 50% of the people who applied for tuition assistance had at some point during the last three or four months been on unemployment. So, you know, we're helping out a bunch of people who had lost their jobs at some point. Most of those people are not on unemployment anymore. I think maybe there's only one person that's still on unemployment. And, and we're able to calculate what they'll be able to get for tuition assistance in September. People, so one of the things that we talked about is that, you know, if people's income is adjusted in the fall or winter season, they can reapply if it's greater than 10% and Corey will recalculate. But right now, the amount that we're giving out is very in line with prior years. So it won't be a huge reduction to the tuition assistance money. The only other thing is that 50% of the people who applied also live in view restricted housing. So I think that just shows that a lot of the tuition, or a lot of the programs that, you know, that we're putting in place are helping our workforce, people who live here and have lived here a long time.
That's excellent. Anything else? All right. Okay, anybody have any other matters they want to share?
Eric, one thing I'll add is we got this week, our downtown Main Street Ambassador Program started. I don't know if anybody's seen any of those people out there wearing the, kind of a bright yellow uniform shirt. Yeah.
The first one today.
Are they doing a report on what's going on or how it's been going, how the interactions have been going? Do we know?
Oh, we did, I mean, we did verbal check-in with them just yesterday. And basically, for the most part, they're, they're finding, they're reporting 95 to 98% compliance. And, and, and then people are really cooperative when they do, oftentimes the mask might be just pulled down or something when they do see somebody without it on. So, yeah, so far, it sounds good.
Great. Thanks for that, Rick. Super important. All righty. Seeing no hands, we're going to move on to our, yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
I have a quick other matter. I should have mentioned during the BOSAC report, that has to do with social equity as well. Somebody brought up to, to Ann or somebody from staff questioning the name of the Trail of Tears. And so they're going to put together a little plaque that explains the trail name. But if you see, if anybody sees any trail names that they think might be not inclusive or might be questionable, just you can let me know or let, let staff know because they are trying to address anything that might sound a little, a little questionable.
I had a long talk with a guy at the top, Sally Barber, and explained it to him. He said he was going to write a letter to the town about it and I told him what it, what it actually meant. And afterwards, he was like, oh, I'm not going to write a letter then. So I think once people understand the meaning behind it, I, I think, I think it'll be okay.
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know. I guess we'll have to see.
But I think, I think part of the point is, is, you know, other, people might not see things the way that we see them or, you know, now look through names with a different lens. If there's anything that's questionable, we can, I think that's a great way to tackle it, to either we can, we can discuss it or if it needs an explanation, we can put up an explanation.
Absolutely. That's a great point, Aaron. Thank you for that. Anything else? Jeffrey, go ahead, whatever.
No, I have nothing. I, I just, I don't think you have a compliment of me in my BOSAC reports.
They weren't that good.
I know, she's, she's such a good student. She's.
She's much more informative.
She is, I don't, I don't know, she's just a goody-goody.
You know what, though? You're a better mayor pro temp.
Oh, without a doubt.
So there you go.
When do you see me next weekend, or next week, whenever it is?
If you want to run the meeting on the weekend, that's fine. All right. Who is doing the?
Me, executive.
Yep.
Session motion. I move that the town council go into executive session pursuant to paragraph 4B of section 246402 CRS relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and paragraph 4E of section 246402 CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and instructing negotiators.
Second. A motion has been made for the town council to go into an executive session pursuant to paragraph 4B of section 246402 CRS relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and paragraph 4E of section 246402 CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. Subjects to be discussed in the executive session include, one, threatened litigation against the town and the possible settlement of a related dispute, and two, a possible preliminary agreement concerning the relocation of the town's transit center. Conference with the town attorney concerns the announced subjects of the executive session, but may also include other matters that are protected by the attorney-client privilege that exists between the town and the town attorney. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
You, yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Giello?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
All right, so go in, everybody log out of here for the public. We'll be leaving and going to another executive session format and then we will be returning to the same Zoom meeting for the regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
Rick, we do meeting to order for July 28th, 2020, in the midst of COVID. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Carlton? Did you say yes?
Yes, here.
Okay, good. Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Ms. Giello?
Here.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Before we do the approval of the minutes, anybody that is watching tonight that would like to make a citizen's comment during the communication to council period, there's a Q and A button at the bottom of your screen. You can go there right now and start typing and we will answer it when we get to that. Or you can go to mayor, mayor@townofbreckenridge.com, send an email. You have a couple of minutes to do that while we finish some other business. We have a short meeting tonight, so make it quick if you got a comment. All right, approval of the minutes, we have town council minutes for July 7, July 9, and July 14 of 2020. Are there any issues, anyone? No, the minutes stand as presented agenda, Rick.
No changes to the agenda?
That you were going to surprise us with something long, just carry around a little longer. All right, we have no continued approval agenda, no. Okay, communications to council, sorry, I got lost there. It's really hard. I see no Q and A yet, I'm going to give everybody another 30 seconds to communicate with us or if you'd rather communicate us, with us sort of offline, you can always go to mayor@townofbreckenridge.com. That does get shared with all the council. And we do get emails from everybody, so thank you for that.
When we get the fiber in, will we be able to go 3D?
Virtual, yeah, we're going to send you virtual goggles.
All right.
Polagrams.
Yeah.
All right, so we have one question so far, and sorry if we missed it. What's the status on the diversity commission? Dick or Aaron, do you want to take this one?
Sure, we are in the midst of hiring on a consultant to help do some analysis with our community. And from there, we will be forming the Social Equity Commission. So we don't have a date nailed down just yet, but we're trying to go slow down a little bit just to make sure that we do everything that, that we're thoughtful about our movements here. But it's pretty exciting. Can we say how we're moving forward yet? Is that public?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we have signed an agreement as of yesterday. We entered into an agreement with the Equity Project LLC based out of Denver. We'll have a, we have a kickoff meeting with Dick and Aaron and Shannon and I at 7:45 in the morning to start laying out the schedule tomorrow. So some of the scope of work that we'll be engaging in is some training with the council and with some of the senior staff. We'll be doing a gap analysis. I'm not sure they called it that right, but really to look, just like the discussion earlier, make sure our childcare, what are those different programs that we're involved in, the different resources we work with and offer to the community? And they want us to make sure that they're inclusive or are there gaps in those things that may be, you know, making them less inclusive? So they'll start doing that work behind the scenes and we'll be feeding them all of the different dockets and documents and information that we have. And we'll probably be coming back to you all with some potential dates in the next few weeks where we want to start locking in some training time. And so, and then there are also, you know, one of the things that they're going to be doing is to help guide us through the creation of our commission. And I think help us in, in making sure that we're doing it at the right time and we're doing it in what they would consider an inclusive manner and everything about how we advertise to select, et cetera, right? So.
Rick, can you mention the name again? You were.
The Equity Project LLC.
So for those of you who are interested, you go check them out online, see what we're, who we're hiring. I think we're all pretty excited about this, especially the training piece for the council. So thanks for the question, Lynn.
And then we're going to open it up to try to get people from the citizenry on the commission.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, no other communications to council, I think we gave that enough time, so citizens' comments are closed. We have no continued business, we have no new business, we had no planning matters, we already took care of the report of the town manager, the report of the mayor and council. Do we have any other matters? I have one, and that is just one more time, I'd like to thank Gary for his service. One of the real bummer's for me personally with this COVID thing and not having meetings with everybody is not being live when we, when Wendy left and now when Gary left. And Gary, once again, thank you for everything you've done.
No, and I would like to just, my last comments as I move away from council is really to thank each and every one of you council members. In my time on council, I have thoroughly enjoyed it, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with all of you. I've seen it as part of a team. I think the team has been very, very effective. The ability to get things done, civil and respectful discourse, I think allows us at the end of the day to, to pull together and to make decisions that are in the long-term best interests of the community. So that's something I'm going to miss very, very much. And I hope, I expect from time to time to perhaps bump into you in town and look forward to that. And if I have some issues, I can take them up with you guys and be a little bit of a pain in the ass maybe, so. And with that, I think the last thing for me to say is really is just good night to all. I've really enjoyed my time on council and a lot of it has to do with the fact of the, the quality and the professionalism and the caring and commitment that all, that all of us have had for the town of Breckenridge. So thank you, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Gary. All right.
That was her kid.
Anybody have anything else for the?
It's Kelly's child, she's sorry for me.
So cute. Anything else, game? All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Gary.
Good night, all.
Thanks, Gary.
Good night.